We'll call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Oversight Board for Consolidated Communications Center to be held at 2:00 PM on February 14th, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Mayor Green?
Here.
Mayor Scherz?
Here.
Mayor Kabliska?
Here.
Mayor Tomy?
Here.
Mayor Wessel?
Here.
He's online.
Mayor Gaston?
Here.
Mayor Hart?
Here.
Supervisor Hall?
Here.
Supervisor Little?
Here.
Supervisor Shorts? Supervisor Trulka?
Here.
Supervisor Layland?
Here.
Great. Move on to the agenda received as proposed or amended. Is there a motion?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item number three, other business. The first item is resolution to approve the fiscal year '24 Consolidated Communications Center budget. I don't know if that's going to lead with Judy reviewing your budget or how you wish to proceed.
I'll try.
Thanks.
So, first of all, I want to apologize that I had to redo some documents just based on how things kind of went with the levy. Originally, the budget was set, and we came to the Oversight Board, and it was decided that the EMA Commission wanted to do a levy, so it was taken back to them. At that time, at the next Consolidated Board member or Board meeting, the Board looked at the budget again and realized that we had left out some radio costs that's going to be, we have to do some upgrades to the radios, so that was amended and added that in. The Commission approved that for the levy, and then, as you all know, it kind of went back and forth, and so now we're back to the Oversight Board. The budget that was previously presented was, had 100% of the budget, and then it also had a 125%. And through many conversations, I was given direction that we need to look at something less than that, and that's why, between yesterday and this morning, I've been working at trying to put a 110% budget together. I also wanted to show you what the 80/20 looked like, 80% calls, 20% population, as well as 70/30, and I had Chief Lightwood help me with some of those numbers this morning. So, I, again, I apologize that you did not get it ahead of time, but I wanted to make sure that we had as much information as we could, some options that we can provide, and kind of go from there. So, in general, the budget really has not changed that much. With the 125, we took out a lot of the things that we were looking at as far as costs associated with additional staff, some changes to the layout of the center, redoing some areas to hold the additional staff, knowing that in that year, we would not be able to bring them in until perhaps a levy does get put into place. So, with the 110 budget, we basically put in, we've got, with my 100% budget, we already put in for one full-time warrants clerk position, which will take some of the load off of the dispatchers, and we can start that process. With the 110, that includes that same position, but it also includes another warrants position to start in January of '24, which would then give us the two positions that we need. And then, we also felt that if we could get the 110, we would be able to maybe hire two more additional dispatchers to start that process of getting them trained. So then, the next year, when we, if we're successful with the levy, we may be able to then start looking at supervisors and some of those other positions, and moving some things around with IT staff, and with offices for the warrants clerks, and supervisors' workstations, and all of that. So, I know that's just a, kind of a basic overview of it. I know you've had the basics of it for quite a while, and again, I tried to be as accurate as I possibly could. I didn't want to inflate it. I wanted to be as honest as I could with what's in there, and we looked at the 70/30 and the 80/20. I hope that answers.
Before you go too far, I was going to say, you brought up that item about the radios being added, and I noticed that was like $450,000.
Yeah, it's a chunk, yeah.
And I was going to say, that's not something we've had in there on a regular basis.
No, it is not, and...
Could you give a little bit update on that?
Yes, so the radios or charge monies continues to go down. The wireless costs have gone up a little bit, it kind of, it goes back and forth, but the landline has gone down quite a bit, and that, I'm sure that will continue to go down. So, we do dip into our reserves every year in that budget because we don't have enough, we have carryover funds that we use to help offset some of those costs. But as we continue down the path, and then we did the software project, which that is in the 911 budget to pay the county back for those bonds, to take on increasing our radio budget by, I want to say it went from 300 and something, clear up to four next year, I think it goes up to five. I mean, it's a five-year plan that allows us then to pay that completely off and upgrade everything that needs to be upgraded with the radio system. So, that's why, you know, we felt that we would put it, and yes, and to maintain it as well, yes, sir.
Okay, that was one of the questions, too. I saw it said maintenance fees, and...
Yeah, it includes that, includes, now, the 911 Board is still covering the cost for the tower sites, the leases, some of the HVAC units, and all of the things that go in with the tower sites, and that, I want to say, runs about 300 grand as well for the 911 Board. So, they are trying to offset some of those things. As far as, you know, anything else the 911 Board covers, they can't cover salaries other than the database manager position, which I do, so they offset my salary a little bit. But that's really all they can, they're allowed to do by code, so.
So, that would be an anticipated cost for every year going forward for...
Moving forward, yes. I mean, again, if the 911 Board can sustain part of it, then we would look at that, but that's why it was moved to this line.
Okay. So, for now, maybe it could be just a one-time cost, depending on where we'd go forward in the future.
It would still probably be part of this budget going forward. And again, we would have to look at it year by year, I don't know what that cost would be. I know with the cost that we got from Raycom, it'll continue to go up.
So, I'm sorry, what exactly is this fee?
It's for the radio upgrade and maintenance plan.
So, it's to buy radios, or it's...
It's to update all the servers, all of the antennas, I don't know if those things need to be...
Hardware and maintenance.
Yes, and then the maintenance costs of that, yes.
Maintenance being like, just as they break and...
Then Raycom goes out and fixes it, they make sure that it's in good working order, they monitor it, all of that.
So, this is really a first-time occurrence on this budget?
On this budget, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on the budget itself, anybody?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we just purchase new radios, like, what, four years ago?
It was five, I think, five or six.
They're now out of warranty, and so that's maintenance plan kicks in now.
Okay.
I interrupted you before you wanted to get on to the plan.
No, I just, I mean, really, it's pretty self-explanatory, I don't know which one you want to look at, I think you've had the majority of it, you know, because nothing's really changed, other than, like I said, that line item, and then we took the 125 up, put the 110 in, and then we tried to look at what it would be at, based on 70/30 and 80/20. So, if you have any questions about anything in particular, I can certainly try to answer those.
So, are the questions today that need to be answered, I guess, number one, if we're staying with the proposed '24 budget, or whether we're going to the proposed 110, and if we're doing also the 80/20, or we're doing 70/30?
Which however this Board directs us to do. And again, I want to say that, no, I will do my best to provide you the information that you need. I appreciate all the work that everyone's done on this. I know it's been a longer process than I've ever dealt with in my 28 years, so, but I do appreciate the input, and I hope I can answer questions, or I've provided enough information so that it does answer your questions.
Well, if someone was proposing this, I would assume there's someone in the group that asked you to do that, so that they would be addressing some of this for us.
There were a couple of the mayors, I want to say, that had asked why we didn't put a 110. I know I had some conversation with Mayor Wessels yesterday, and worked with him a little bit on some of this, so he could certainly jump in and speak to it.
Yeah, I spent quite a bit, this is George, I spent quite a bit of time with Judy on the phone yesterday going through it. I needed to have kind of an understanding of more of the Raycom, and I said, I can't speak to that, Judy, you're going to have to re-speak to that line. And what I was really looking at was from a standpoint of having gone through the Delta Works proposal, and looking at short terms as well as long terms, I feel critical that we go with a 110, whether it's the 200 or the 450 for the Raycom, I have to have somebody else speak to that piece on what's the more critical. But I feel critical that we go into at least a 110, so that we can start with the recommendations of getting those warrant clerks on there, so that your dispatch people can stay on the phones, not have to handle that paperwork. I don't think anybody can really argue with that one. And I also suggested that she put in, then, that second person to be hired from the dispatch standpoint, as well as that second warrant clerk on halfway through the year. That way, it would maximize, it would give time to start that process, it would give the ability to see if that is assisting the way we expect it to assist, and then move it in that direction. From the standpoint of the 80/20 versus 70/30, I suggested she definitely have those showing so that each of the municipalities and county can take a look at the impact there. I feel that we should go ahead and go with the 70/30 on that one, it starts to move it towards where it will be after we get the levy approved a year from now. It won't go all the way, but it helps move that dollars a little bit between the municipalities.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I've moved to approve the emergency levy amount for 110% that exists in 80/20.
Is there a second? I'll ask again, is there a second for that motion? Anyone on Zoom as well? Okay, hearing none. I, for lack of a second.
I'll pose a question.
Excuse me, there's no second.
I understand, so then that motion dies, correct?
Yep.
Right, yes. Yeah, and I passed it out. Can you ask me?
Yes.
The consensus of the mayors, and we have reached out, I have talked to every mayor, sorry, Mayor Wessels, I haven't, I didn't have a phone number for you. The consensus of the mayor is that it goes to valuation, it goes to valuation now. No 80/20, no 70/30. We're going to be doing that in the future anyway, let's just take the leap right now. You know, is, I had passed this out, I don't think you see one supervisor as well.
But you can see, there's several things through that. If you're looking at a 50/50 split, you know, I think that that's somewhat reasonable, maybe not go into the whole 100% valuation at once.
I'm in favor of the 100% valuation going forward. I also, there's a consensus of the mayors also to stay at the 100% this year. That does allow for one warrant clerk to be hired, as you all know, that have hired staff. It takes time to get them up and going. You know, we don't want to, you know, that's going to be a challenge for the center as well. So, now, some of these additional expenses that we're facing, we all want to move forward. We all want to have a better communications center. You know, it's not our goal to stifle, it's not our goal to go back 20 years, but we need to go forward, it needs to be reasonable right now, because every single city in this county has also had additional expenses due to everything's going on for the last three years. Thank you.
So, you're proposing 100% val, you're proposing valuations totally?
Valuations totally, 100% valuations.
On 100% budget rather than the 100...
At 100%, and actually, I'm making that motion.
And what are you considering, 100%?
Over 100%.
No, whether it's the...
100%.
There have been two versions, in November and January.
3,307,000.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
Well, that would not be what I passed out today with that radios, with the radios, 100% would be 3,307,447. Is that what she's, I'm sorry, I thought she said something higher, let me look at this. 3034, okay.
Yeah.
I got it, I apologize, no, you're right.
Well, so it's clear that Mr. Wessels and folks that may have to hear.
Yeah, yeah, we need as much clarity as can be.
Okay.
Thank you.
My motion, I make a motion, we approve the 100% FY '24 proposed budget at 3,307,447. I propose also that that is 100% based on valuation.
And I think we had questions...
Yeah, I needed to clarify a couple of things here, if this is the route you're going. First of all, on the valuations, are we using taxable with TIF or taxable without TIF?
What's that?
Is this based on taxable, including the TIF districts, or taxable without?
Whether or not we use TIF.
I don't think you use TIF. You can't use it for a tax levy, but you guys are basing your formula on valuations, and dispatch does provide calls for service in the TIF districts. Frankly, that's where most of them go. And I'm just asking, I want to make sure we're clear before...
Yeah.
The second question I had was, are we legally able to bill Elkhorn Heights and Raymond? They're not part of this agreement, traditionally, they have not paid. We presume that that's because the entities that provide services to them are collecting that from their, from their payments. So, I don't know, I just want to make sure we're legally able to bill them these amounts. I have to send them the bills, and I don't want them to come back and say, we don't have to pay that, we're not part of your Oversight Board. So, those are my questions, and whichever way they answer it is great, but I want them to be cleared up before we move forward.
Yeah, for sure. Yes.
Just procedure follows at 1.1 million dollars, although we almost want 1.2. I, I'm not sure we'd be able to participate in this, I'll leave dispatch just correct.
Further discussion on that? That's certainly an impactful decision.
I mean, I guess if the intent of the motion was to get closer, closest, to what's been proposed in previous conversations, then to Tim's question about whether it would or not include TIF, we would certainly tax all valuations. We wouldn't tax, correct? We wouldn't tax properties that were outside of... No, sir, no, you're not able to use your general levy to tax valuation that's a TIF increment, so anybody here who's raising money right now to pay these bills are not using their TIF increment. I'm just saying that, you know, that's probably the way you're intending to go, but I wanted to point out that it does kind of skew the formula if we're talking about valuations, because some cities have significant amounts of their property value in TIF increments where others don't, but...
So, you could do a formula that allocates the cost, you do a formula that allocates the cost to each city based on their total value, but they tax for it only on their non-TIF value, I think is what Tim's suggesting.
They could do it that way. It'd be an option.
I'm assuming this breakdown that's shown on this sheet is not including the TIF increment values, because most of the spreadsheets that have been handed out in the past did not, because we were talking about using a countywide levy, which you can't collect TIF off the countywide levy, unless it's a debt service.
See, I'm hesitant to say this, but I would say we probably don't have enough information in front of us right now to make the decisions, these important decisions, since obviously we'd maybe be excluding Cedar Falls, and what that does to us, but also whether or not, what the TIF does for us, or not using TIF. And I'm sorry, that's what I, that's my feelings right now, and Judy, it's certainly not any fault of anyone that tried to put this together before today, but when everyone's just seeing this information for the first time, and probably just discussing it as a group, it looks like to me for the first time that there are some factors we, unless, like I said, it's certainly the will of the group on how we want to proceed, but it's, we've got some various factors in here that are pretty important and critical to us, and the amount of funding that we're talking about, and decisions for TIF districts as well, but I said, yes, thanks, Tim, for that.
Sorry.
No, no, you needed, I know, that's, I appreciate your help. What's the will of the group?
There is a motion, I mean, there is a motion and a second.
Was there a second?
Have they addressed the question, like, about Elkhorn and Raymond, for example? It does look like they have them in here.
I mean, if this...
They are.
This is the payment amount, this is the payment amount, but I want to make sure that we're legal, if I send a, if I send an invoice to Raymond, and I send an invoice to Elkhorn Heights, that they're going to pay those, and are they legally obligated?
You're exactly right, they're not represented in the Oversight Board.
They're not, they're not part of this agreement.
They are not. No, and I'm just standing up to clarify that. Raymond is handled under the Sheriff's Department, and Elkhorn is handled under the City of Evansdale.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, does Waterloo provide fire protection services to Elkhorn? So, I don't know how that would be broken out.
When I do it, I, their calls for service are part of, like, all of the fire analyst calls are within the Waterloo Fire Council. They're counted in there, or the police calls are all part of Evansdale, and for Raymond, they're all part of the Sheriff's Office, and then he also just takes them, the fire administration.
Right, right, okay.
That's how that has always been.
But by going to valuation, you change the metric on that.
Right.
I, I'll bite my tongue.
You don't need to bite your tongue, I was going to say, I think information is helpful.
I guess I don't know if Evansdale, Waterloo Fire, and the Sheriff's Office would have any sway, and whether you could convince them to pay these invoices if they went. That's, I mean, I just want to make sure what happens if they don't pay, I...
Or, well, or are they saying you're supposed to add those to the other communities?
And Mayor Green, just for clarification on your comment, too, about you'd no longer be a part of Consolidated Communication then, I'm assuming that's because you would take this decision back to your council?
Right, and I just, I don't know, I can't guarantee it, because it's not been discussed with anyone on staff, I'm just trying to talk about administrator.
But is any mayor, I mean, just wondering, like, that's probably, I would assume that's the case for most mayors. I mean, I know there was quite a bit of communication earlier in the year with the assumption that this was coming off of everyone's books, and so, I don't know that...
Coming off of everyone's books, the city's books?
Oh, yeah, everyone out there's books, right? So, I get that, I get this, I think it was some, I think it was some assumptions.
Some assumptions, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, I guess frankly, if we were ultimately asked to impose this across the county, it seems most logical, most equitable, to take the same sort of formula by the current contributors of this system. And it would ease sticker shock in future years for residents of Cedar Falls, for instance, but...
Other thoughts from other mayors?
I mean, I guess my feeling on the valuations is that eventually, they're going to be paying that valuation dollar figure on the county section of the tax bill, so getting it closer to that and having that, sticker shock, as you say, Supervisor Hall is ripping off that Band-Aid that, okay, this is your, what you're going to be paying, next year, you're going to be paying that same dollar figure, it's just going to transition from a city funding source to a county funding source, and that will still be a portion of your tax bill, and trying to ease into that transition is kind of where I think Jane, my city clerk, was going for when she made this chart.
Comments from anyone else?
Is Leport going to stop the city emergency management levy? Are you no longer going to collect an emergency management levy at the city level?
No, I mean, yeah, we will continue to collect for, yeah, for the going year, whatever we decide, and then, this is just what we, yeah, we would never drop out.
Quick question, so for Mayor Green, Cedar Falls, and the rest of them, since for some of us, it fluctuates, is there still a potential recommendation coming forth, Mr. Supervisor, to kind of help with this transition just this one year? You had mentioned last time that the potential of coming up with the use just one time...
Of additional dollars.
Of additional dollars to help everybody during this transition, because I would probably say, mayors-wise, and I can't speak for everyone, but there was a lot of us that had, this was not in the budget we were expecting, to your point earlier, a lot of us didn't think, so, if there was some help to help transition the cities, kind of try to balance out the costs, because it's for 20-plus years, or however long this was, it was kind of this, this, so, whatever help you can do just this one time, I'm pretty sure Mayor Green and a lot of us would appreciate some help very much, so thank you for listening.
There is a motion and a second on the floor, but we, do we need to clarify the question on the TIF versus non-TIF?
I would like Michelle to speak to that, she's been a part of this as a city administrator for years. I mean, what would your answer be to that, Michelle?
That, it's an allocation, so, just to clarify what Tim was getting at, I think what he thinks you could do, because obviously, if a dispatch call is placed from a business in an industrial park, which I'm going to say is what TIF is, even though it might be more than that right now, people are going to be dispatched there. So, the industrial parks do use the dispatch services. One disadvantage, I guess I'll call it, or con, of using the EMA levy and/or the way that you're talking about this, just using property values, is those businesses in the industrial parks, while they'll pay it, it's going to stay in the TIF district, right? So, one of the things you can do under the current method is you could choose to allocate the cost to all the cities based on their value with their TIFs. So, what that would mean is entities, I won't just say cities, entities that have large values in TIF would likely bear a larger share of the cost, because their property values in the TIF would be counted. If you don't include the TIFs, it would shift who pays again, but if you go to countywide, it's not going to include the TIF either, so that's the question.
In the future.
In, forward, in the future, right, not this year, but at some future time. Yeah, so it's complicated, like everything, where the word TIF comes into it.
I mean, I think if you were making the argument, the fairest way would include all of the value that's being protected by the public safety entities, which would be TIF, however, that would just be a one-year formula that way. If truly we were going to an EMA levy next year, then it wouldn't include the TIFs, so we'd be just talking about the one year where the formula would be that way, so, I don't know. I mean, I think I can make the argument it's more fair to use the TIF valuations, but it's also just one year, and we'll be back without it, so...
But something to consider next year, I mean, really, that...
It is a factor to think about, yes.
It's a factor, but yeah, but this is an option for us this year.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just looking at the numbers here, for us, for Cedar Falls, we're looking at almost a doubling from last year of our expense on this, good 100% valuation, and I was just protecting the city administrator, I just wanted to be clear with him, like, he would have concerns, right? Absolutely.
He did take care as well.
And still, so that's why I couldn't support this.
And that's, and that's why this conversation for multiple cities has always been... And that's, that's, and that's why this conversation for multiple cities has always been like this. Because, you know, I want, just like Mayor Green said, that, you know, the possibility of this year may not support her the following year. I mean, we also, just to be completely transparent, reached out to a consultant to see if it costs less to provide this service internally after the start of costs. And so that's why, you know, we were really on board. It wasn't to put the county in a tough position or, you know, staff versus this. This was real conversation that we've been having for the last couple of years about how we pay the most. To me, and this is unofficial finance statement, to me, it would have been the fairest way is to levy this across and so that everybody was at 46 cents, not one community at 22 cents, another community at 92 cents. But that, to me, was the most fair and maybe least expensive way for the entire county, not just municipality. So that's why if there's anything that you can come up to at least help Cedar Falls and the rest of us this first year of this department, we really would, really would appreciate it.
So question, so the motion.
County Backfield.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody loves Backfield's Hill, right?
I don't think that's.
We always trust them. So, so the motion that was presented, I'm assuming that's based on, ultimately it's percentages. So if there were additional dollars contributed from the county for some capital projects, for instance, just, just saying.
For capital projects?
For, yeah, for radios.
Oh, you're meaning, oh, I see.
If, if the county were to decide to come in.
I wouldn't rule, I wouldn't make.
We can't make, no, I understand, I'm just asking.
I mean, I don't want to put things in people's heads that that's going to happen because this hasn't happened in order for them to vote on this.
Correct, oh, correct.
That's what I want to be careful of.
Yep, 100%, 100%. But I am just asking as a point of clarity that if we were to make a decision as a board at a later date to come in with additional dollars, would that mess up this ordinance or this, this resolution? Or, sorry, the past budget? Or is this just ultimately passing a percentage that they would fund whatever that dollar amount is? So let's say instead of the 300.
I think everybody walking out of this meeting or from now needs to make their decision based on this. And if we can add to it or we.
Yeah, I'm asking you as just a point of clarification.
That's what I meant, just for them to be clear on that it doesn't be based on that, it's not.
Correct.
Sure, gotcha.
Correct.
Okay. So that clear as mud? I think everybody understands that the decision today is based on these factors.
And the, so the motion is not for the dollar amounts, it is for the percentages?
It is for the.
I think it's both.
Yeah, I was going to say the 100% on valuations at the 3,300 and.
Totalling 3.3.
3.37447.
Okay.
As I understood the motion.
And so it's the percentages from the individual entities to get to 3.3.
Yeah, I was going to say unless, yes, unless Judy, I was going to say whoever calculated the percentages. Yep, that's what you're saying.
So then my question is, if, if the county board of supervisors, if we come in at a later date and fund for additional dollars to offset some of these expenses, if we were to do that, this budget would still stand, it was still total 3.3 million dollars. The percentages to each community and entity would remain the same, or would.
Percentage stay the same, yes.
Yes. It'd be, let's just say, $200,000 off the top.
Right, so I will say when, and it's been my job in the past to take the budget that's adopted and issue the invoices to the cities. We've always taxed based on, we've always invoiced the cities based on 95% of expenses. So we back it down to 95% of expenses first. And then you deduct any revenue that comes in. And then the result then is what the cities actually pay. Because the amount that shows on here is greater than what you get invoiced for. Because we only, we only invoice at 95% anticipating an underage. So if the county board of supervisors were to come in and put X amount of dollars in, we could count that as a revenue, it would come off the top. And everybody's percentage essentially would stay the same here.
Perfect, correct.
Correct, thank you.
That 300, 3 million, 3.3 does include the revenues coming off.
Right, but this would be an additional revenue. Right, but then there'd be an additional revenue amount that we could, if the, if the board were to do that, it would be additional revenue we'd plug in and it would lower the amount. I would encourage that decision to be made soon because if I'm going to invoice the cities, we, I mean, they're going to want to know what their amount is. And if we're talking about adding additional revenue there, just make that decision.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Appreciate it.
How are you, with the evaluations, how are you going to clarify with Raymond and Elk Run Heights, who's going to pay that?
We just did, because we are responsible for. Yeah, we're responsible for Elk Run because they give us a statement for law enforcement. Sheriff Thompson is responsible for Raymond because they received a statement for law enforcement.
Assume for Raymond, you and Mayor Hart might have to arm wrestle over how much.
Elk Run.
Or Elk Run, excuse me. Because Waterloo does fires.
I got my money on telling you.
Again, I think from our, we just want to make sure we know those are going to get paid. I mean, maybe they'll pay them. That's, that's going to be a large, large amount for both of those communities.
Yeah.
That they weren't expecting.
Has anybody notified them of that?
Expecting there might be some blowback, I don't know. But if they say no, what do we do?
Yeah, has anybody in this group notified them or had conversations with them? No?
Just for clarity, I said that we were responsible for Elk Run.
For, for the police calls portion.
Okay, so the fire would be Waterloo, right?
Manhart, gee. We just have to pass along the way the bill. The fire just have to build up, pardon the bill.
Yeah.
So that's 27 additional thousand dollars. Right?
From Elk Run.
Well, some of it's probably included in the bill. We bill them now.
For fire.
You're going with valuation, so it's 27,000 dollars.
And then 19,000.
And 19, yeah.
Apparently I.
Not apparently.
We can do payroll deduction for you.
I, I'm not trying to be difficult, honestly. I just want to make sure that this is cleared up before this gets passed.
There's no metric for.
Right.
How to take a call volume in evaluation. Can I offer up a contract with Raymond is just over 20,000?
Yeah, could, could you make, could you make it based off of participating entities? A percentage based off of participating entities versus, I mean.
They're not a party to the 2018.
That's why you're saying exclude them.
Yeah, so you would exclude them from, from all calculation. And you'd avoid that headache.
And who picks up their costs?
It would, it would be distributed throughout all of the participating entities.
We're not doing this, we're not doing it on per call basis or doing it on valuation basis. Right, but I, but what they're saying is like versus you guys trying to figure out or like a chair taking the full 20 and paying the 19,000 dollar bill would only be 20,000 dollars from Raymond. What he's saying is he's providing services for free for Raymond versus now they pay for his services. So if you take the 27 and the 19 and you take, you add that back into everybody's and split it through the evaluations and everybody kind of helps with that along the way until it's, once it gets to EMA and it's on county, you don't have to deal with it at that point.
Can I speak real quick?
Yeah.
Because that's really not accurate.
Please, no, you can, please. This is what.
And I'll speak for Waterloo Fire, although I'm not a Waterloo fireman. Waterloo Fire bills for their service. Elk Run, Raymond, were not part of the calculation for dispatch fees under the 80/20. So that is included in Waterloo's bill to Elk Run for that. And the same would apply for you guys and for the Sheriff's Office. He gets 20,000 dollars from them, they're not in these calculations. So his dispatching cost was included in that 20,000 dollars. His services were included in that 20,000 dollars. Under this, the 20,000 dollars would cover, it'd be the same, it'd be a wash to the, to the two small cities. And I don't know what Waterloo Fire charges, I'm trying to find out. But they already pay for the service in their budgets.
There was a note from Mayor Whistles.
Mayor Whistles, yeah.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Mayor Whistles?
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion on the table. And it's basically relative to the supervisor's future potential action. I'd like to propose that should the board of supervisors decide to fund any dollars this upcoming year, that they first be allocated to the Cedar Falls share due to their increase in cost.
That's weird.
I would put it, I would put a cap on that for the first 300,000.
Thank you. Well, I guess we have a couple of motions on the floor. That was his amendment, that's his amendment, yeah. All right, thank you, George. Anything else to be amended to that?
Any amendments to the amendment?
Mm-hmm. 100%. At the percentages, I'm just trying, you want to read it back, Tim?
As I understood the motion, it was from, from Mayor Whistles, second to Mayor Green, is that if Black Hawk County decides to put additional funding beyond what they've already been budgeted into the formula, that the money would first come from Cedar Falls share up to a maximum of 300,000 dollars. Did I get that right?
Yeah, it'd go towards their share.
Okay.
Rob, where do you read those numbers? It looked like last year your share was about 800,000. And now your, your share would be 1.1 million, is that right? Is that the way you read those numbers? No, I had 618 total. To 1.1? Yeah. Okay.
300,000 didn't do it for you? Still difficult? And. Not sure that, not sure that'd be fair anyway, but that's kind of equity.
So his proposal is whatever support it goes to Cedar Falls versus, versus down by the percentage that each one of those pay. So for instance, we pay 60% of the tab, they pay 50% of the tab, Black Hawk County pays, I forget Black Hawk. The situation time looks so right. And then Evansdale pays 10%, Hudson 8%, so this is.
So while that was a motion and a second earlier, with that amendment, it is.
And because I understand the amendment, it's just a request.
Yeah. No, George was saying though, should the board decide that.
I just want to, I do want to clarify though, the document, uh, the motion that Mayor Green made would have had Cedar Falls paying 911,000, is that correct?
Well, no, it, it will, whatever you decide.
No, but that, but that, but the motion that Mayor Green made. At the 110 would have been at, would that, would that have been at 911,000 dollars?
941.
Oh, 941, sorry, there's two, there's two sheets here.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a 70/30.
Yeah, that was the 70/30.
Okay, so at 9, so at 941.
That was, yeah.
No.
Okay.
Fresh slate.
Just making sure. Okay.
So do we have, we have a motion on the table?
Yes, with an amendment.
We have a motion, we have a motion.
A motion and an amendment.
And an amendment, yeah.
Let me explain the logic for my amendment if I could.
Yes, please.
Unfortunately, I don't have all these numbers in front of me like I think most of you do. Quentin, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
Do a question, can you, if we go to the 100%, if we go to the 100%, what would your new bill increase over the current? Or anybody else who can answer that?
On here, it actually goes down for the 100% valuation.
Correct. Right, and Mayor Green, how much would yours dollars?
So looking at the 23 of 618,000, which I understand Sartori gets part of that taken out, whatever some of that costs. But ours, I have a 618, almost 619,000 dollars for last year. Because the new approach that's being proposed is 1.16 million.
Okay, so the only logic for my amendment was I think nobody can disagree that the biggest impact in this change to total evaluation would be to Cedar Falls. The reason I'm proposing that if the county elects to put any dollars into this as of one time, that it first reduce that tremendous tip to Cedar Falls. I acknowledge that once the whole process be moved over to a countywide taxing, it will be on a county bill and the Cedar Falls residents will pay all of that. But then it would be on a county bill as opposed to an immediate scenario where it would be, have to be covered by property taxes at the city bill that under the current state guidelines and everything else that's going on would be a huge hit. And even if that dollars were to go to reduce the impact to Cedar Falls, it would still allow Cedar Waterloo to incur most of that significant reduction in billing.
Yeah, so I, what I'll say, I'm all about fairness and helping out every city. But if you calculate over the last 20 years, you know, it is, I suppose the most, this would be, would be calculated over the 20 years. It wasn't until the cost for certain, the populations that, that we started to see it bouncing out a little bit. So I, you know, it's a great motion. I don't, I don't favor the motion at all, so, but we do have a motion on there. And so your motion is that the, the, the dollars that comes from the county goes to Cedar Falls.
That is.
If it were to happen.
If it were to happen with a cap of 300,000 dollars. And my motion was being an amendment has to be voted on prior to the original motion.
Yeah.
I think you're going to have a difficult time explaining that to the rest of the residents of Black Hawk County. You gave the money to one place. I understand that they have the largest increase. Their evaluation obviously has gone up too. So I think, you know, again, I have the least in Gilbertville to worry about out of all the communities. But I think it's, it's tough to say you're going to give it to one community and not across the board. I don't know who wants to explain that to the Jacks. Mayor.
Mayor Whistles, we'll have him do it.
I'll be glad to.
I know, Mayor.
Because as, as everybody recalls, you know, Quentin and I are in disagreement. We both realize that as far as equity. I'm a cost accountant by trade. You need to understand where accounting comes from. It comes from a fixed and variable costing scenario. And as I've talked. And as I've talked over the last seven or eight years, I can appreciate going to the taxing across the county because I agree with Quentin and everybody else, it will eliminate this pretty much annual discussion or arguments that we have. If you worked at it from a true talk to pretty much any CPA, and I know I'm a constant pain in the ass because of those initials, but basically you have a fixed cost that you've got to have, consolidated call center, and where does the activity come from? It comes from calls. It's because of calls that you have to have increased staffing. I'm done talking. I call for a question on the amendment.
Okay. Question on the amendment.
This is just on the amendment?
Just on the amendment.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Green?
Hi.
Mayor Scherz?
Linda, could you read the amendment on what the actual motion and the vote is?
Yes, would you please, Tim, well?
Uh, should Blackhawk County choose to put additional funding in, the funding would come out or would, would go towards Cedar Falls share up to a maximum of three hundred thousand dollars?
Is that clear for everyone? And it's just the amendment, Mr. Little?
Right. Mayor Kabliska?
No. Don't you wish.
Tommy?
No.
Wessel?
Yes.
Gaston?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Hall?
No.
Little?
No.
Layland?
No. Cholka's up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mayor, uh, Cholka?
No.
I didn't realize Supervisor Little had arrived.
Thank you.
So the supervisors cast one no vote, so the final outcome is four to four, so that amendment fails.
Friendly amendment, please, yes.
Whatever they have broken down by percentages of what they call, so if it's, if it's, if they're at thirty-five percent, whatever you give, uh, is thirty-five percent, if it's at fifty percent, so, Tim, if you say that, that would come in.
Um, no, but I think that's where we were at before.
Yes.
Without...
But going, I mean, it doesn't hurt to restate that.
No, if, right, the, the question earlier was asked that if the board put in additional funding, how that would work in the budget process, and it would come on, come in as an additional revenue, which would keep the proportionate costs of each city the same.
It'll do what it's, it'll do what it's...
Correct.
Yes.
If their percentage is forty percent.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So I don't believe we resolved the TIF issue, right?
Well, if these were, if these were the figures, then I think it's resolved. I don't think we even need to answer that question. I just raised it because I didn't know where these numbers had come from, right?
All right.
And, and we have resolved the Raymond and Elk Run question.
Whether they know it or not, we have, I guess.
Correct, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
I, I will bill Evansdale for a portion of Elk Run and Waterloo for a portion of Elk Run, and all of Raymond will be added to the county's portion through the sheriff. And, and Waterloo and Elk Run will tell me which portions you guys are picking up? I didn't think so, but...
No.
Came up later.
It was the amount and the proportion.
I, I would like some assurance that Waterloo, well, Elk Run's portion, if we're going to bill Elk Run and they're not a party to this agreement, someone needs to pay it. And I understood that Waterloo and Evansdale would work out how much of their share each of you would pay.
But then later, someone said they should just be excluded from the calculation, so I think we do need a motion.
Yeah.
How do you want to do that?
The amendment...
Because you, you could, if you just took those valuations out and you allocate the same cost among the remaining values, then they just don't get billed and it's just not an issue this year. So there's several options here that someone needs to propose and vote on. And we could just take it all out of Tony's paycheck.
Why not?
He'd be happy.
And with, as you just, as you just talked about, just going off of the participating entities in terms of the valuations, the services that are rendered would, could still be billed, correct?
I'm saying we're going to take the total cost of dispatch, just like we are this year, and instead of allocating it based on a, a combination of population and calls, we're going to base it on the value, but only of the entities that participate in this agreement, which means Elk Run and Raymond just are not part of this agreement. That's just one option. It would be clean and easy, um, if, but that's not what you, that's just one idea. Another idea is to do what we've talked about and have Evansdale pay for part of Elk Run, but then there's going to be some messy bookkeeping that somebody's got to figure out, that's all.
Because we've got to hit that three-three.
Got to get to three-three.
Three million, so it's like somebody's going to carry it or...
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a hole. Brings me back to my original question, maybe we need another...
Well, I just, I think, personally, because they've never been part of this agreement, it makes a lot of sense to me not, just don't include their valuation and just don't include them in the calculation because we already have agreements, these, these entities already have agreements in place between them to handle their services. And, and I realize there'll be a slight difference because of calls, because we're not, we're not doing this based on calls, but it, it would, if you're needing to make a decision today, I think it'd be simpler.
So it would remove twenty-seven thousand seventy-five and nineteen thousand one-eighty-one from these calculations and be added into the remainder of the group. I mean, it wouldn't remove them from the three million total, it's going to still make that three million, it's just allocated different...
Right, right, that's the thing. It's just going to allocate it slightly differently.
Yeah.
And I call for an amendment to my original motion.
Okay.
That we would allocate Elk Run Heights and Raymond, as they were not originally involved, that would be allocated by percentage to the rest of the cities involved in the twenty-eight E agreement.
Was it, there was a second? Okay.
I'm sorry, were you changing your original motion or did you want that as an amendment?
It's an admission.
Okay.
You ready to take a vote on that amendment?
One second.
No, no, I'm not rushing you, I'm just wanting to ask.
Mayor Hart, you seconded that, right?
Yes.
All right. That's the amendment to exclude billing Raymond and Elk Run Heights and spread those costs proportionately among the remaining entities?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Green?
Hi.
Mayor Scherz?
Hi.
Mayor Kabliska?
Hi.
Mayor Tony?
Hi.
Mayor Wessel?
Hi.
Mayor Gaston?
Hi.
Mayor Hart?
Hi.
Supervisor Hall?
Hi.
Supervisor Little?
Yes.
Supervisor Cholka?
Yes.
Supervisor Layland?
Yes.
That passes.
Yeah. You're surprised, you get something fast, huh? Okay. Yes. Yes, we're ready for that, no.
You ready for that one?
It sounds like it, yes.
Look, I should mix up the order here.
No, that's fine.
Got it the way it is.
You got it something.
Mayor Green?
Can you read that motion again?
Yeah, please.
Sure, the, the original motion was to adopt a budget of three million, three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and spread the costs among the members based one hundred percent on their taxable property values.
Does it have any language in, Tim, any language in around the county?
No.
Thank you.
I think you know what the answer would be to that.
So, so Mayor Green, you did vote no?
We'll let you know next year.
What was that, Tim? What was your question?
I was just going to start the rolling.
You're ready.
I'm sorry. Mayor Scherz?
No.
Mayor Kabliska?
Is this on the original motion?
This is on your motion.
Yes.
Mayor Tony?
Yes.
Mayor Wessel?
No.
Mayor Gaston?
Yes.
Mayor Hart?
Supervisor Hall?
Hi.
Supervisor Little?
Yes.
That passes five to three.
Great. Looking back to the agenda. So that was enough of a resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty-four consolidated communications center budget. And that is with the radios included. Everyone's like, all right. Item B, any other needs or concerns that need to be addressed?
Yes. Just a couple of points of indulgence. Um, first of all, thank you for the difficult journey that's taken us to this point. Number two, welcome to the fight. Because this last hour, you felt what I've felt over the last eight years, even to the degree of trying to keep together a consolidation that sits on a pretty precarious tightrope. I've been asked several times why I'm passionate about trying to move this organization forward in the way that I am. And to a small degree today, I think you felt that.
We felt it a lot more than today.
So there are some things that I want you all to be able to ruminate on. Moving forward a hundred percent budget got us one clerk, but absolutely no prior or forward thinking and no forward planning. This group asked for that study. Not a single chief, not the sheriff, and no one that sits on the Consolidated Communications Board wanted that study to be performed.
Really?
One chief, and he's no longer here. We didn't want to spend sixty-some thousand dollars on what we already knew the answer was going to be. This entity asked for that. And the decision today to move to a hundred percent budget doesn't speak to any of the answers you got.
No, but some of the planning that can go forward from this does, Tony, it really does. Oh, you shake your head no.
We're, we're, we're moving, we're moving slightly forward, which is one of the most painful things for me in government. We inch forward. We inch forward, and that's painful.
Well, that's what you do with tax payer's money, I'm sorry.
It's painful.
It is painful.
And it's painful to be interrupted while I'm speaking.
Well, I'm sorry, but you don't get to hold it for like it's your own risk at this.
The challenge, the challenge for us is as we move forward, we try to move forward in such a way that we have impact because we make difficult decisions out in the trenches every single day. And that's what we asked of you. It's what we continue to ask of you. So as you ruminate on the decisions that you make, and this is truly where the politician, the bureaucracy meets the road with the operational side of what we do. And that's the challenge, that's the, that's the pressure point, that's the, that's the, the frustration point. And that's exactly where the chiefs and I sit every single day. So again, I say welcome to the fight. I say welcome to the trenches because you felt just a twinge of that today, but we sit there every single day. So we ask for you to ruminate on that. We ask for you to feel that pain, that pain and that pressure point that we feel every single day. Because when we get the results of the questions that you had asked from Delta Works, and we do minimal to move forward now that the question's been asked, now that we have the answer, now that the liability's been exposed, the concern's now ours, right, moving forward? We own that liability. We being everybody in this room, we own that liability. So we need to continue to move forward diligently, not inch by inch. We need to continue to move forward in a way that is concerted, that is engaged, that is fruitful. And I pledge to you that we will continue to do that, both the Consolidated Communications Board and the EMA Commission will continue to do this. Because what we continue to have is not an option. Where we sit today is not an option. The solutions that we came up with today, as difficult and as challenging as they were to support a one hundred percent budget, doesn't move the margin but an inch to where we need to be. So I just would like you to think about that as you consider where we stand every single day out in the breach. Thanks.
Thank you. And I would like to consider this as well, the planning that is so important for us moving forward and the collaboration of all of us moving forward is what needs to happen as well. So inching or however we get there, we need to keep doing it and we certainly need to be involved. So I appreciate all of your time here today. I know this was difficult, but thank you. I think we made progress. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, no. Can we clarify first?
Could we clarify?
Clarify first a little bit more about the twenty-eight E, where that's at, a new one?
Mike was going to get a draft to supervisors as soon as he had some of his things caught up, I know, so as soon as he does, we'll be sending that out. I know, we, we asked him about it last week and I know he was in court or something too, but, and he was going to get that as soon as he got that draft ready for us. He's not presented that to us yet, but yes, thank you for asking. So we had a motion to adjourn in a second?
I think to the twenty-eight E point, um, we're, you know, I think as you mentioned before, we're, that's going to take some time to kind of...
Work through.
So we haven't gotten it yet, so it's, I don't even see it being a factor right now. So we've got some time, we've got some time to do that.
Sure. Thank you.
We'll... Because this was a hard decision, I hope you know that. But, you know, cities have been hit so hard this past year with everything. I mean, all the costs, you know, we're at fifty percent of our budget in December for fuel. You know, you have to understand, we can't take on anymore. But we want to move forward with this, this process. And I would, I'd be the first one to step up and say, I want to be involved in that team. I want to see it move forward. I want to see, you know, I want to see a big step next year. This is a year, this is a year, we're not taking a step back, we're moving a little bit forward, okay? I want to thank the sheriff's office, I want to thank the EMA and Consolidated Communications Board, after too, yeah, it's a tough time, but I just hate having losers and I don't want it to feel like that. I know my colleague, that's, I'm hoping maybe even next year, we can begin this planning process to get to where we're supposed to be in twenty-twenty-eight. But the motion's been made.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.